I hereby call to order this public hearing on budgets for the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, August 26, 2024. We are at the MECC and the time is 7:00 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Erin Stone.
Here.
Allison Pathless.
Here.
Amy Palin.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Here.
John Cesaretti.
Here.
Ann Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Mackenzie Assistant Principal Anthony Haddock will introduce summer enrichment students to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My name is Anthony Haddock and I am the Assistant Principal at Mackenzie Elementary School, fall, winter, and spring. But over the summer, I have the privilege of being able to work with students and staff and families from across the school district for our summer enrichment programs. And so this evening, we wanted to be able to showcase some of our students that participated in those classes, and in particular, invite Dr. Michael Donhost, who also goes by Mr. Mike, over the summer, to be able to showcase his work with the students from our classes this summer. So I'll pass this over to him. Thank you. I'll move over to this side, and we're ready for the slideshow. All right. Cool. Yes, so my name is Mr. Michael, and I was lucky enough to teach three summer school classes this summer. And what we decided to do, because there were two STEAM classes and one coding class, was we decided to turn the makerspace into an amusement park. And our youngest students worked over the summer to make a putt-putt mini golf course. Our older STEAM students worked on a Rube Goldberg machine, and our older coding students worked on creating a game, Nate, just like an arcade. And they're each going to share their favorite part about what we did, and we're going to start off with Libby, I think.
My name is Libby, and my favorite part of summer school is mini golf.
My name is Hank, and my favorite part about summer school was also mini golf.
My favorite part about summer school is mini golf.
My name is Nate, and my favorite thing was probably making a video game and doing the Rube Goldberg machine.
My favorite part of summer school was playing Joust on the TV.
And then we'll have an opportunity now to be able to say the pledge with all of us. Nate, do you want to go ahead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice.
Thank you so much for coming here and sharing your favorite parts of your summer with us. You guys made me want to go play a round of mini golf. You did. Thank you for being so brave and for leading us in the pledge, and if we could give everybody a round of applause for doing such a good job. And then we have a little treat for you. If you want to meet me over here, everybody gets a little present, and then we'll have you go out that door and meet your parents in the lobby. Thank you again so much. Great job.
And real quickly, before we go, I forgot to advance the slides, so I have three quick pictures. So this is the outline of our putt-putt course around the outside of the room. And then the next picture, that's the Rube Goldberg machine, which goes in and out of computers there in the center. And then we have our arcade over to the side. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Tremascoli. Well done, students. Thanks. Yes. Okay. We are ready to move on to budget presentations by Dr. Tremascoli.
Well, in fact, I'm going to introduce Cory Boltemeyer, excuse me, who's, he along with his team have put together the budget and presented actually a couple of times already to the board. So tonight's budget will be a review for the board and the most up-to-date view of this. Cory?
Okay. All right, so we'll walk through this really quickly tonight. We talked about it in detail at the August Committee of the Whole Meeting. All right, so the first three slides tonight in the final budget, we're just outlining the changes, a summary of the changes from the spring to tonight's meeting, which is the final approval. Back in the spring, we started with a net deficit of 2.1 million. And one thing to note on this particular first slide is the big jump in interest revenue from the spring. That was primarily related to Cook County having their second installment bills out on time for the first time in a few years. There are a few more changes, and then we come to an ending, on this third slide, come to an ending net deficit of 2.86 for the year. And I will, on this next page, will kind of highlight what the importance of the net deficit is versus just a general deficit or surplus. So this slide shows a summary of the operating funds for fiscal year '25. Up in the top right-hand corner, we're looking at revenues and expenditures. So I've bolded the 4.2 million, so that's our first look at, you know, where we're at. So that number being positive is a good place. And then as we go just below that, I've broken out the types of other uses that we have for a couple of reasons. One, it's nice to see what the two components are, but one is just always keeping in mind that we've committed for the long term to pay roughly 1 million in principal and interest on debt certificates that was used to fund prior construction projects. And then the other part of it is to fund construction projects, which would be the last parts of stuff that's done this summer that we're just wrapping up, and then the initial parts of construction for summer '25, plus all the design work that would occur during this current school year. So then that takes us to our net budgeted deficit of 2.86 million. So you see the biggest driver of going from a surplus position to down to the deficit is the planned spending on construction projects. And then as we jump to the bottom of the page, just seeing that we're expecting to finish fiscal year '25 with over 43% fund balance. Once we get through our audit in the fall, I do expect that 35.6 million near the bottom of the page as the July 1, 2024, fund balance. I do expect that to jump up a little bit as we finalize our fiscal year '24 amounts. This shows our allocation of operating revenues by source. We're right at about 93% combined local funding sources. On the expenditure side, we're looking at 79% of our resources going towards salary and benefits of staff. And this shows, you know, the consistent revenues exceeding expenditures year over year, which is what we're striving for. And then the one last thing related to the fiscal year '25 budget, one of the requirements that we have, a couple of our different presentations throughout the year, is just to disclose our cash balances at a specific point in time. So we chose at May 31, the cash balances across all the different funds was 52.4 And this is merely just a disclosure requirement to be done at a public meeting. That's all I have related to the District 39 fiscal year '25 budget.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions or comments on the District 39 budget? Okay, let's move, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I'll just say it again. I mean, considering the heat today and tomorrow, I am just how grateful we all are for all of the planning, knowing that the air conditioning work has been a multi-year project and a enormous capital investment on top of all of the other construction projects and resources over the years, and just very grateful to be in this place right now, and certainly in light of just seeing on the news some districts that are closing down either late today or tomorrow. So just a job well done and a very exciting place to be in, and to see that the reserves are around 44% at the same time. It's just been, you know, excellent, responsible planning and management and the budget, and very grateful.
Yes, completely agree. Any other board members, questions or comments about the budget? All right, I think we're ready to move on to the WICSE.
Okay. All right, so this one will be very brief as well. So WICSE Just as a Review is the joint agreement between D-39 and Avoca School District. Where our board here at D-39 is responsible for approving it, as we serve as the fiscal agent for the agreement. And there's not a lot to talk about, other than the revenues and expenditures for fiscal year '25 are set at 227,000. They're equal each other, it's that way every year, and we have no expectation for a fund balance at the end of the year. That's really the WICSE budget.
Thank you. Board members, any comments or questions about that? Okay. We're moving on. This is an opportunity for the audience to address the board regarding the presentation of budgets. Are there any audience members who wish to speak at this time? Okay, we're going to move on to the public hearing on resolution to authorize a permanent inter-fund transfer, which I believe is also being handled by Mr. Boltemeyer.
Yes, so this one will be very brief as well. No slides, but as part of our budget for fiscal year '25, we had planned to transfer 1.5 million from the educational fund to the operations and maintenance fund. And to do so requires a few steps along the way, posting in a newspaper, holding a hearing prior to the board, voting on that permanent inter-fund transfer. Primary reason for that transfer is that the operation and maintenance fund transfers money to our capital projects fund, which is the place where we spend money on the construction projects, capital projects, doesn't have a dedicated funding source from year to year. So it gets money from operations and maintenance, and then for this particular year, we needed to supplement the operation and maintenance fund a little bit with the 1.5 million to keep that in balance. So that's why we are asking the board to approve that resolution later in the evening.
Board members, any comments, questions? All right. This would be the opportunity for the public to comment on the permanent inter-fund transfer resolution. Are there any public members who would like to speak at this time? Okay, we will move on. Having no further business, I request a motion to adjourn the public hearing and move to the regular meeting of the Board of Education.
I move to move to the regular meeting of the Board of Education.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ann Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Allison Pathless.
Yes.
Amy Palin.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yes.
John Cesaretti.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes. Motion carries, and we are now adjourned to the regular meeting. I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, for Monday, August 26, 2024. The time is 7:15 PM. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the June 10, 2024, regular and executive session meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the June 10, 2024, Board of Education regular and executive session meetings.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Allison Pathless.
Yes.
Amy Palin.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yes.
John Cesaretti.
Yes.
Ann Hart.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes. The motion carries, and the minutes are approved. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on any topic. Are there any audience members who wish to speak at this time? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our board reports. We have our Facility Development Committee, Mrs. Kim.
Thank you. There were two items discussed under facilities development, the first being the summer 2024 construction projects, an update on that, and the second is the budget estimate for the summer 2025, 60% project design. Nicholas and Associates shared that the summer 2024 projects at Willmet Junior High, Mackenzie, Central, and Ramona went well, and the projects are being, are nearing completion. Nicholas and Associates then reviewed the 60% design budget estimate for the Willmet Junior High first-floor AC renovations project, which came in at 4.2 million. This was an increase from the estimated 2.9 million back in the spring of 2022 for the project. A combination of construction inflation and budgeting conservatism leads to the difference. An 85% design budget estimate will be shared with the board at the September Facilities Development Meeting. This project is currently scheduled to be released for competitive bidding in September, with potential board approval occurring at the October Board of Education meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to school finance, Mr. Cesaretti.
President Stone, so at the same meeting, the Committee of the Whole discussed, and the Finance Committee reviewed three agenda items, the District 39 FY 2025 budget, the WICSE FY 25 budget, and the annual tax compliance notification. The District 39 FY 2025 budget had numerous changes to it from June 2024 to August 2024. Mr. Boltemeyer provided a brief presentation on the final budget, along with reviewing several of the larger changes made to the budget since June. The impact of the changes yielded a change to the FY 2025 budget from a 2.17 million net deficit to a 2.86 million net deficit. The net deficit is a direct result of planned spending on 6 million in construction projects during FY 2025. FY 2025 is budgeted to end with over 43% in fund balance. The final FY 2025 WICSE budget was reviewed and revenues and expenditures equalling $227,406. WICSE is a joint agreement between District 39 and Avoca School District, with District 39 serving as the fiscal agent for the joint agreement. Due to District 39 having issued bonds in the past, the district is required to complete an annual tax compliance review related to the outstanding bonds. Mr. Boltemeyer has completed his annual review and noted that District 39 is in compliance with this requirement. And that's it.
Thank you so much. We did not have any strategy items this month, so we will move on to liaison reports. IASB, Mrs. Pathless.
Yeah. Two things to report, the IASB North Cook Division meeting is taking place on September 30. There are, it starts at 5:30 with tours, then there's dinner and a presentation, 6:30 to 8:00. If anyone would like to go, they can register with Nancy. The second thing to report is, again, just another reminder that the Joint Annual Convention is taking place in Chicago on November 22 to the 24th. And again, you can register with Nancy, and you can find details online.
Thank you. And we are keeping it with Mrs. Pathless for the legislative update.
I have no update.
Okay. We will move on to information items. Dr. Tremascoli.
Thank you. The board received written communication from Brittany Ferris regarding class sizes in D-39 compared to area schools, and from William Freiden and Haley Freiden, Sieg Miller, excuse me, regarding kindergarten curriculum. In terms of announcements, I'll just keep on going, if that's okay. We celebrated our opening of schools. We're really thrilled to be off to a great start. Our schools are buzzing with energy and with enthusiasm for the year ahead. Last school year, as I shared on our opening day, we accomplished so much together beyond the growth and connection and achievement of our students. We celebrated our successes as educators as well. As professionals, we grew, we expanded services, we refined our practices, we collaborated as teams, and we strengthened our culture and climate overall. There's a few things we really recognize and are proud of in our work last year. The board should know this well, but reviewing and adding new curricular resources in a variety of areas. We added new services such as math interventionists and SEL programming, some new advisory experiences, some, not some, a lot of new student clubs, and new instructional coaching this year as well, so we're excited about that. We took a close look at climate and culture, and we know we have a lot more work to do in that area, but our schools are launching some exciting things in those regards. And perhaps best of all, we added air conditioning to our classrooms, almost all of them, with the exception of a few that we know are queued up to hopefully be accomplished in this coming year at WJHS. And wow, what a difference it is making for the start of school. We have a few things that we're still working out in a couple of classrooms, but our maintenance team and our construction team are on it and trying to create those fixes as quickly as possible. But for the most part, it has just been a game changer for us. So we want to take a moment and thank the board and our community for supporting that huge investment in our schools. It really is felt and recognized in helping us to launch just a really great year. As we look at the year ahead, we will be building on the work that we accomplished last year. We will implement a lot of new resources and continue to refine our professional practices within each of our content areas. We're also really looking to nurture those connected communities within our classrooms, within our schools. There's a lot of work to be done there, and a lot of work being realized, a lot of accomplishments. We continue to strengthen our teams, our professional collaboration, our climate and culture, and this year in particular, we're focusing again on goal-setting and that growth mindset to really nurture what our students and we as educators are doing. We're really excited that our classrooms are more than just places of instruction, but they are communities, and they are creative, as we saw with our students today. They're connected, and they are supportive, and we're really proud of what we're doing in our schools. So thank you all for helping it to be just a great start to the school year. I will mention, as we started the school year off, institute days and trainings, we spent two, well, we first did our new staff orientation, and then we moved into training with all of our returning staff, and had two great days of not only institute day, but a lot of collaboration, a lot of time spent with each other. We had a great kickoff. Thank you to everyone who helped to make that possible. And then staff got to return to their schools, enjoy some air conditioning, but set up their classrooms to really be ready to welcome our students. So we are off to a great start. As we saw this evening, we had a really fantastic summer school. This year, we had over 200 students participate in the summer programming options. We had 121, I'll say about, students at Ramona and 108 at High Crest. Programs included extended school year, review and reinforcement, as well as enrichment, and our students really seemed to benefit a lot from that. We look forward to providing the board with a report on summer school at the September board meeting. I already mentioned summer construction, but I want to take a minute again and just really celebrate the fact that projects were done on time with a whole lot of extra work. Our custodial team did an outstanding job. Our schools were really just shining as we welcomed staff back, and then students and families. So we're really incredibly grateful for the improvements that have been made in our schools, for the ongoing, really thoughtful planning that is happening to maintain our schools, make sure that we can accomplish everything that could be possible within our schools with our students and staff. So thank you. We are very grateful and really want to mention and call out our maintenance team, our custodial team, and our business office for all of their hard work to make all of that possible. In terms of Freedom of Information Act requests, the district received FOIA requests from V Vance of Creative Energy from Seattle, Washington, requesting email addresses and job titles for all of our teachers, principals, the superintendent, and Ministry of Staff and board members within District 39. That has been responded to. And that concludes our report. Happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? Okay, I think we're moving on to strategic plan update. Dr. Tremascoli?
Yes, I am very proud to present to the board and our community our response to the CRC report. I'll give just a little bit of background and then highlight a few things. I think this year in particular, our administrative team really dug into this report to make sure that we were aligning not only with our strategic plan, but also with the goals that we're hoping to accomplish. And this year's report presented a lot of new ideas, some that are reinforcing and some that really made us think. So the board knows that CRC has worked for four decades. It really unites stakeholders, a lot of parents, but also teachers and administrators and community members coming together to investigate each year a specific topic of potential improvement, and then to present those results to the board, to our administrative team for incorporation into our action steps. So each year, the CRC aligns its work to our strategic plan. This year, the CRC, their research really aligned with Goal Two, which is supportive community, as it addressed the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of our students. So in May, they came and presented their report, which was titled Harnessing the Power of Free Play to Advance Educational Outcomes. That was presented to the board. The report's research and findings focused on the cultural, societal, and societal shifts away from free play, and how that, those diminished opportunities were really impacting students, children, especially with regards to risk-taking without adult intervention, and the negative impact that that is having on our youth, and how we can, as a school, really incorporate some of those ideas into our schools. So as I mentioned, our administrative team really carefully reviewed those recommendations. We recognize the importance of shared value and understanding in free play. We're seeing a shift in our community's approach, and we want to support that to really support our students. So we have accepted the CRC recommendations, but we're going to implement over some time because there's a lot that's there. So in year one, we're really focusing on learning and reinforcing several elements that are already in place. You'll see we're investigating parent education opportunities, recognizing that this is really a partnership with our parents and with our community. So there's several things that are in the works there. We're looking at professional development opportunities for our staff and our supervisors. We're looking to encourage play before and after school, and really set some boundaries for what that can and should look like, who should be supervising, what opportunities might exist there, and really trying to support that as a district. We're also looking at a variety of choices for indoor and outdoor recess activities. We know that sometimes our students do need to be indoors. We want to make sure that that is an opportunity for free play, and also, what are we providing? What opportunities exist when they are able to be outdoors? We're recognizing and honoring the developmental value of allowing children to experience and work through some of that social work through some of that social conflict and some of the discomfort that comes along with that. But we also know that we have responsibility for supervision and for assisting our students. So we're really bringing together these ideas and grappling with that a little bit administratively. So the other thing we wanted to really look at is what we're doing with recess privileges. Every once in a while, when something happens at recess, we look at that as, okay, we need to step away from recess, support these students through that social conflict, and we're trying to really evaluate what are the best ways to support that and how can we intervene, recognizing that sometimes that break is needed, but also the value of free play is really, really important. So among these many responsibilities, we really value and place a strong priority on keeping our students safe. We know that our parents do too. So we are recognizing that there's some differences of opinion in how we intervene with students as they're playing at recess, within the classroom, how much adult intervention is really needed, and what is that right amount when we're supporting our students through the learning process of social engagement? And so we really want to spend some time learning as a community and developing some common understanding. So we're really focused on considering how some of the recess rules may inhibit or support free play and then fostering that district approach to safety, balancing all of those developmental needs and the different perspectives that exist. So I, along with our entire administrative team, want to extend our gratitude to the members of the C R C, special recognition to the President, Najah Masakio, and to the Vice President, Amy Peters. Their report really offered a thorough and extensive analysis of the power of free play, showcasing the deep commitment and belief of these benefits. And so you'll see, as we get ready to present the strategic plan action steps this year, that many of their ideas have been incorporated, but we're also recognizing slow and steady is how we're going to get to a real community-wide approach at this. So we're just so grateful for the investment of time and resources of so many on this team. And so I'm presenting the report to the Board this evening and really, really pleased with all that we've learned.
Agreed. Board members, any comments or questions at this point? Mr. Caesaretti?
I had one up until Carrie. You addressed everything.
Well, I anticipated and then...
You did.
Solved your problem.
Yes. It was such a good report. It resonated. And I'm so glad that it made it into the strategic plan. I think that's, that means, that's good, you know? I think it hits on issues that a lot of people care about.
I think so too. And I think, again, as we grappled with it, there's so much to learn from the findings and so much to try and incorporate among balancing our responsibilities as educators and as parents and as support people for the youth of our communities.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to also thank you, Dr. Kremiscoli, for this excellent response and for how seriously you took the C R C's report and really honored it. It was so impactful last spring to hear their report and to see the way that you have taken, you know, all of the work that they did last year and really incorporating it is really fantastic. And I really appreciate the fact that, you know, one of the first things that you mentioned was the importance of educating parents, you know, especially if we're adopting a new mindset, just to make sure that everybody's on board and that what may look like, but like, there's no adult supervision. It's, you know, instead, an opportunity to let, you know, children maybe resolve things on their own. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. And I will share that really it's my honor to summarize these findings today, but it is truly the work of our entire administrative team. Katie Lee puts a lot of time into supporting our strategic plan and our, and our action steps for the upcoming year. And so I really, this is a reflection of our entire team's really diligent work in evaluating these recommendations and incorporating them. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other Board members? Okay, we are moving on to annual business. Dr. Kremiscoli?
Yes, we are going to start out. It is pretty typical at this time of year that we provide the Board with an enrollment update. And so we've talked quite a bit about this. We talked about this in the fall and at the most recent Committee of the Whole meeting. We know that there's another follow-up discussion that we'll have in November at Committee of the Whole as we put the plan for the upcoming year. But this report, and Dr. Galawaki is going to review it very briefly, just gives an update of where we are right now in terms of class arrangements and class sizes throughout our district, enrollment and staffing as well.
Dr. Galawaki?
Thank you. So since the report in May, we've opened an additional classroom in kindergarten at Central and Harper. We also increased a classroom in first grade at Ramona and added additional supports for second grade at Mackenzie and fourth grade at Harper as their class sizes are reaching their guidelines. Our principals and assistant principals have worked tirelessly this summer to make sure that our students have the faculty and staff available to them that they need. In November, as Dr. Kremiscoli said, we'll be beginning to look at next year already and looking at our class guidelines and class sizes so that we can plan for the year ahead. We take a little bit of a break for the next couple of weeks, but then we're back at it.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? Okay, and I think we're moving on to fiscal year 2024 Administrator and Teacher Salary and Benefits Report.
Thank you. I will just share that this is an annual review of the, I'm sorry, an annual report that's presented each fall. We are required to publish this information, and so this information will be posted and remain on the district website.
Any comments, Board members? Okay, we're moving on to annual tax compliance notification. Cory?
So as we talked about two weeks ago, since we issue bonds, we're required to take a look back and make sure that we stay in compliance with all the requirements of having outstanding bond issuances. And after the review for this year, once again, District 39 is in compliance. So we're just required to report that at a meeting to the Board.
Thank you. Anything from the Board members? Okay, we are moving to Board Policy Review. Dr. Kremiscoli?
Yes, as is now customary for us, every time we receive some legal updates or the press updates their policy from I A S B, we take a really close look. Dr. Galawaki helps us with this, and then the Board's attorney also reviews. So there are a plethora of policies that I know each of you has read carefully. So this is the first reading of the Board of Education Policies Recommended for Revision or Simply Review, and we welcome feedback on any of them.
Board members, any feedback on the policies? Mrs. Paffless?
I just have a question, actually. How much of it is our language and how much of it is press or like, I don't quite?
Yep. So a few years ago, the direction from the Board was to align as closely with press as possible. So I will tell you, it's mostly press, but the importance of the legal review is that our legal, the Board's legal team doesn't always align with the press language. And so there are sometimes suggestions from the Board's lawyers about how to adjust or maybe not adopt all of the press suggestions. And so that's the importance of the legal review.
Okay, thank you.
Any other Board members? Mrs. Kim?
Thank you. I have a number of comments or questions, so I'll try to get through them really quickly because some of them are quite minor. But starting on page 15, which is 2:265, maybe page two of that, I'm not sure, but there's, there's all these definitions that are there. And with some of the definitions, and I'm looking here and then in the next few pages, sometimes you have like complainant and respondent in italics, and I think that sometimes they're not. And so I was trying to think, like, you know, I was wondering if that was intentional, and I think it's probably not. And maybe just, if you just take a look at that and, and see that that also happens a couple of pages later. And so if you can take a look at that, that would be great. And then on page 38, which is, sorry. On page 38, which is dealing, well, it's 5:20. And there's this addition of like including discrimination and harassment. And I was just wondering why it was limited, why the protected classes were, I mean, this is sort of my, you know, my, my work area of somewhat expertise, but, and I was just curious as to why it was only discrimination and harassment on the protected classes of race, color, and national origin. Because in the workplace harassment, right above, in the section right above, you know, you kind of have all of these different protected classes like race, color, religion, you know, national, you know, like, and so I'm guessing there's a reason why it was limited in focus. Can you explain that?
I, I'll start, but I can also do some more investigating. This is a result of, and Kristin, I'm going to look to you, to the Race, Racism Free Schools Act that came through. And so this language came through directly as a result of that new requirement.
I believe it was, there's, the legislature came up with some new requirements related to that, and this is directly from the Racism Free Schools Act, along with updating a couple of other policies.
You'll see it again in another policy in Section 7 as well.
Yeah. Just like, to me, it reads that, you know, there are some things that by excluding all of the different, the other protected classes that you list in the section right above, it's almost like, you know, that they're maybe not as important or, you know, or sometimes they get like addressed and sometimes they don't.
I know that we specifically had to call out this section as a result of the new law, but I do hear what you're saying, Bonnie, in terms of emphasizing or de-emphasizing.
Yeah. And I understand that too, if you're, you know, you're doing that, like, that, that section is in compliance. There was, and then I'd like, hey...
Get some additional information back to the Board if we can find something that helps to clarify that. Thank you, Bonnie.
I appreciate that. And then on page 39, there's just like this very, it's, I think that under number three, permit anonymous reporting, except that, I think it's, and should be and, do you see that? Okay, it's just a typo. And then I had a question on, I'm almost done, on page 67, which deals with bullying.
What page?
Oh, sorry. It is 7:180. And in the second paragraph, where actually you're kind of adding all those protected classes that we were kind of talking about earlier, in the second paragraph, it says bullying on the basis of, and then there's all these protected classes. Is, and then it's, you know, after you get to the, to the bottom of the list, it's bullying on the basis of that is prohibited in each of the following situations. So I guess my question is, does bullying have to be based on a protected class or couldn't bullying just be because you don't like somebody, but it doesn't have to be because of their race or their religion, you know? Like, this is more of a question than a...
Yeah, so we would investigate anything, and part of the investigation looks to see if it is a protected class. It doesn't really change what we as a district do in terms of our responses to behaviors that are deemed bullying, but it does change how we report, and the state requires us to track bullying on the basis of any of these protected classes, and we now will need to report that on a yearly basis. So we will still investigate whether it's related to any of these or not. And again, our discipline or our supportive measures will be the same depending on, on what the severity of the issue was.
Well, I think my concern with this paragraph is that it looks like the definition of bullying is, you know, is predicated on there being a protected class, unless that language is somewhere else in this, you know?
Later down, a little bit further down, it has the definitions of bullying and has, definitions of bullying include, you know, placing the student or students in reasonable fear of harm as to the student or student's person or property. None of those are based on any type of protected class. It's sort of how the student ends, ends up feeling on the basis of the treatment that they're receiving from their peers or others.
Hey, can I add to this a little bit? I mean, I really see Bonnie's point here. Why not, why not say that this is a reporting requirement, if it's a reporting requirement, and that bullying is bullying for us?
I don't know. I don't know if there's a reason we can or can't. I do know that you have to pull it, you have to state all of the different protected classes. That is a requirement by Illinois law. And then again, the definition of bullying later on really is what we go by when we determine has, is a behavior determined to be bullying or not. So maybe...
Maybe just state that any form of bullying is wrong.
Or maybe that definition can come before the, like, that subsection, you know?
That's what I was wondering, reading the policy. Is it defined somewhere else? I mean, maybe we just don't have the policy where it's defined.
Well, the definition is like on the bottom of that page.
Yes. No, but I... Same page.
Alison, are you asking whether there's another policy that's not under review tonight that deals with, is that what you're asking?
Yes, because we have...
This is the policy.
It is.
Okay, okay.
And it does, to, to, I think what Bonnie and Kristin were talking about and pointing out, there is further definition of bullying.
Yeah.
But having that paragraph be second, it feels a little like it's saying this is the only kind of bullying that we will attend to, and, and I think that that's not, that's not accurate. So we, we will look at other ways to either reorganize the verbiage or simply add a sentence, as Lisa was suggesting, that, that says that any form of bullying is prohibited.
Okay, so anybody else have any comments or suggestions about this?
I have one, which is...
Okay, go ahead.
Can we, and I don't know, maybe it's here, but can we cite the law that says we need to do this?
Yes. It's usually cited, like, if you look at the second page where it says Bullying Prevention and Response Plan, there's the school code that's cited there. And then it's cited in the definition as well, the school code.
So, so the law came out and it amended the Illinois law or whatever section this is?
It, it added specificity to some of the language within it. And it's school code, yeah.
So as a procedural matter, unless there's, anybody else who has something else they want to suggest specifically? Did you?
Not on that topic.
But on one of the policies?
Yes.
Okay, because I would just think, why don't you go ahead, then we'll talk about what I was going to say.
Done with that topic.
Policy, we will, we will look at either reorganizing, adding some language, specifying a little further what, what it is we're, we're trying to convey here, and we'll bring it back, and then you can look at it again.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Paling, did you have something?
I just had a question that I'm sure I just missed. Everybody else probably has this, but there were a lot of changes in 2:265 from sexual harassment to discrimination. Yes.
So Title IX laws have changed effective August 1st. And so the changes to 2:265 is a direct correlation to the changes in the Title IX laws. It's a little more broad.
So do we have more about sexual harassment elsewhere?
No.
No.
Sexual harassment still falls under 2:265. It's just a little bit of a broader umbrella.
So it includes discrimination and harassment?
Yep.
Okay.
Anything sex-based?
Okay, anybody else? Mrs. Hart?
A point of clarification on that same, 2.265, number six toward the bottom of the page, require that any individual, and then designated by the, has been taken out, but, so now it reads required that any individual district, as they involved in the evaluation. Should this be required that any individual, and then we should strike district as well?
So it's page five of 2:265. So it's page 5 of 2:265. It is Point 6.
Correct.
That I think Anna's talking about. It looks like there's a word or some, require that any individual. Of the district, maybe?
Yes. Right. Require that any individual.
Repatch.
Of the district.
Yep.
Instead of any individual district.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Decision making one word?
As it probably needs to be.
Didn't know if that was one word or.
Oh, that should be, yeah, two words or.
I think we've lost the screen here.
I was just going to say, something's happened up there, but I'm still on here.
We're still live.
We're still live, okay.
It's just being displayed.
Okay. Any other suggestions or questions about the policies? Mrs. Pathless?
One other suggestion or request, maybe, is that if I could have a, like, the table of contents, like that would list every, just the name of the policy, not the actual policy, but I find it really hard to figure out where all these fit in with the other ones sometimes, or just a link where I could go to that. It doesn't, I don't need it printed out every time, just.
Are you wanting the entire policy book? Because there's a link on the website for that. Or are you saying for this? Yeah, it's linked right on the website.
Like the question I had before about is it defined in a section above it? That's just not listed here? I find that, I just find it hard to locate where I am in the middle of policies sometimes. But it's online.
It is. It's under the board tab. It says board policy.
Okay.
That's okay.
All up there.
Okay.
And the other thing, maybe that could be helpful, just hearing your comment, is on the subject line item, if maybe instead of just listing it as one long line, almost like bullet point.
Yeah.
So you could see it or no?
No, I think it's more about like what's missing. And if I, if I just go to the tab, it sounds like online, then I can just see what's above it and what's below it in case section that covers the question that I might have.
Yes.
Yes, that makes sense. Well, that's helpful for the community to know as well. So thank you for pointing. No, don't apologize. You're good. Any other suggestions or questions or investigation we want Heather to do? So I'm thinking procedurally, so this is the first read. So we're going to come, we're going to approve that tonight, but come back with the second read with all of the new draft language or answers to the questions. Remind me, is that going to happen at September's meeting?
Yes.
Yes, okay, at the regular meeting. Okay. All right, so we're good on the policies for now? Okay, thank you so much for all of that thoughtful input. That was great. I love our board. Okay. All right, so this would be another opportunity for the public to address the board on any topic. Are there any audience members who wish to speak at this time? Okay. We will move on to our action items. The next order of business is the consent agenda. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? All right, Mrs. Hart, please proceed with the motions.
I move to approve the personnel report dated August 26, 2024. I move to approve as first reading Board of Education Policies 2:40, 2:60, 2:70, 2:125, 2:140, 2:260, 2:265, 4:15, 4:20, 4:40, 4:70, 5:180, 5:200, 5:310, 6:60, 6:110, 6:140, 6:150, 6:230, I move to approve the bills for payment from June 11, 2024 to August 26, 2024. I move to adopt the annual budget for Wilmatt Public Schools.
Wait, I think that's not part of the consent agenda. Do we have the accounts payable and the manual check amounts?
I move to approve the accounts payable bills listed between June 11, 2024 through August 26, 2024 in the following amounts. Educational fund, $213,084.42. O and M fund, $46,078.21. Transportation, $73,927.33. And capital projects, $1,750,154. For a total, all funds, $283,243.96. I move to approve the manual checks issued between June 11, 2024 and August 26, 2024 in the following amounts. Educational fund, $3556,693.61. O and M fund, $787,964.68. Debt services, $475. Capital projects, $1,585,669.49. Tort, $154,308. For a total, all funds, $6478,606.97.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
John Cesaretti?
Yes.
Amy Paley?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes. The yeas have it, the consent agenda is approved. I seek a motion to approve the District 39 fiscal year 25 budget.
I move to approve the annual budget for Wilmatt Public Schools, Cook County District 39, as presented in this report, reflecting all anticipated revenues and expenditures for a period extending from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Cesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Paley?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes. The motion carries. I seek a motion to approve the Wilmatt Community Special Education Agreement, or WICSE, fiscal year 25 budget.
I move to approve the attached resolution authorizing a permanent, I'm sorry. I move to adopt the Wilmatt Community Special Education Agreement annual budget as presented in this report, reflecting all anticipated revenues and expenditures for a period extending from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Paley?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
John Cesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes, motion carries. I seek a motion to approve the inter-fund transfer resolution.
I move to approve the attached resolution authorizing a permanent inter-fund transfer in the amount of $1,500,000 from the education fund to the operations and maintenance fund as contained in this report.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Paley?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
John Cesaretti?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes, motion carries. We are moving on to conference items. Is there any old business? Is there any new business?
I'll take a minute if I can and just show everyone, the board and the community. I think it's valuable to show where the policies are located on our website. So if I can share my screen, let's see how successful I am at this. But if I can, I'll just point out to everyone where they can find this. Oh, look at that, okay. So if you're on our website, you can go under Board of Education. You can see board policy. You can go specifically to the section if you wish, or you can just click on the entire thing, and it will bring you to the actual board policies. On the left, you can navigate, or you can use the section index to navigate. And then the complete index actually gives you direct links to any of the policies that you might want to see. So you can kind of scroll through. I visit the site a whole lot. I'm sure you're surprised by that. But maybe not everybody knows that this is where you can go to. We used to print these out in paper format, and we found it was too difficult to keep updated with the number of changes that were being made. It was too frequent that people were looking at an old copy. So this is the most up-to-date copy that you will find. Once the board approves at second reading and adopts the policy, our team goes through and updates everything that's on here. So you can navigate through here. Some sections are more visited than others. But we're also always happy to help you find a policy if you'd like. But to Allison's point in question, I think sometimes it is really helpful to be able to look through these independently because sometimes what you're thinking about is covered by a different policy. So there you go. You're welcome.
Thank you. That's helpful. Any other new business? What about good and welfare? I have something. Okay, let's hopefully this makes sense, makes sense in my head. So I've been thinking about this idea of getting ready. And for a little bit of context, when I have my act together, I swim laps at a very early hour. And then after I do that, I, in the summer, when I don't have to go to work, I go watch the sunrise at Lake Michigan. So there was a day a few weeks ago where I had, was coming back from watching the sunrise. I was headed west down Central. And I paused when I went past Central School because there was a light on in a first-floor classroom. And there was clearly a custodian inside, it was really early, who was working on getting the room ready. And I was really impressed, not surprised, thinking about what Dr. Kremis Gole said earlier tonight about our custodial and maintenance team, but just started me thinking about all that people do to get ready for the school year, the teachers, the administrators, just, I mean, everybody in the district, and how much it helps our kids get ready for where they need to be. I just dropped my baby off at college on Saturday, and he was ready, in no small part because of his experience in this district. I wore my Steve Kerr jersey tonight because, I mean, why not? But I mean, my favorite line from him is when Michael Jordan is talking to him in game six in 97 against the, you know, the Jazz. And he says, I'll be, Steve Kerr says, I'll be ready. And then he was, and then he made the winning shot, so yeah.
Sure did.
So I don't, right, so I tied it all in. But anyway, just so, I just wanted to express some gratitude for the enormous amount of heavy lifting that goes on by everyone in this district every day, but particularly this time of year, to get our kiddos ready to be welcomed and to learn. And it's so exciting that it's in air-conditioned spaces now, right? Like, anyway. So just thank you to everyone on behalf of me and I think the rest of the board for just doing a phenomenal job. Thank you so much. So yes.
Sorry.
You like that? Any other good and welfare?
No one would follow you.
It's not, it's not a competition. You can all talk.
Well, says the winner.
The winner, Steve Kerr. I mean, they drew up that play. It was brilliant, right? Yeah, anyway.
It was brilliant.
It was brilliant. They all thought it was going to Jordan.
I feel bad for all the people out there who don't know what you're talking about.
It's okay, they can watch The Last Dance on Netflix. Yeah, okay. Okay. All right. We, having no further business, we need a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting.
I move to adjourn the August 26, 2024 regular board meeting.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
John Cesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Paley?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes, we are adjourned, and the time is 8:04 PM.